Good evening. I'd like to officially call the May 21st meeting of the Lane Community College Budget Committee Meeting to order. Thank you, everyone, for being here. Celia, would you please call roll?
Sure. Kevin Al Tucker.
Here.
Denise Diamond.
Here.
Larissa Ennis.
Here.
Austin Folnagie.
Austin has a family emergency, so he'll be excused this evening.
Will Gray.
Here.
Dan Isaacson.
Here.
Charles Kimball.
Here.
Steve Mattel.
Here.
Zachmal Holland.
Here.
Amber Patterson.
Here.
Ron Preisler.
Here.
Julie Weisman.
Here.
Jesse Williams.
Here.
Okay. Jesse's going to begin the meeting with the reading of the land recognition.
We acknowledge that we are on the traditional homelands of the Kalapooia people. The Kalapooia were stewards of this very land for over 14,000 years before their traditional way of life was forever disrupted. We start our meeting with humility and reverence for the original inhabitants, the Kalapooia.
Okay, we will now move on to the approval of the May 21st committee agenda and the May 14th meeting minutes. Are there any changes or correction to the minutes? Do I have a motion to approve both as presented?
I'll move.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All right, all in favor of approving tonight's agenda in the May 14th meeting minutes, say aye.
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 Are there any nays? Any abstentions? Okay, the motion carried. Okay, we'll now be moving on to public comment. The board may not respond directly to any issues that are raised during public comment, but we'll refer those issues to President Volger for appropriate action. Celia, do we have any public comment tonight?
Yes, we have Jim Arnold, followed by Adrian Mitchell.
Chair Patterson, members of the Budget Committee, President Volger, colleagues and friends, hello again. My name is Jim Arnold. I'm a Lane County resident and a retired community college dean. In my last full-time position, I had responsibility for six academic departments plus athletics. I managed the personnel and budgets from everything, from physics to football. I have a deep appreciation for the financial woes we face in higher education. I'm here to follow up from last week, offer a few observations and make another recommendation along the way. At the last meeting, I asked why the projected $3.1 million deficit had not been shared with us sooner, especially since the earlier proposal from the Budget Development Subcommittee didn't reflect a shortfall. I also urge this committee to request a revised budget, one that's balanced and doesn't rely on reserves. I appreciated Mr. Isaacson's candor in expressing confusion, which echoed my own, about what changed so suddenly to throw the budget out of balance. The administration cited a variety of factors, including shifting assumptions, the need for various refinements, and a lack of time for more thoughtful decision-making. I, for one, was not entirely persuaded by these arguments. I also heard other committee members express real discomfort with budgeting for a deficit while relying on administrative mid-year corrections. Mr. Mattal observed that this could be interpreted as a "not-too-exceed" budget, but I contend that setting an artificially high ceiling doesn't make an unbalanced plan a responsible one. Now, it seems the administration is hoping for approval of their budget tonight. My recommendation is simple: take a step back. Hit the pause button, engage your most curious selves and inquire, is that the right thing to do? I ask you to give the process another week for serious, transparent deliberation. Adrian Mitchell's latest analysis, which was made available to you yesterday via email, includes various scenarios that show a balanced budget is within reach. These alternatives deserve an honest review before any final decision is made. Perhaps you could consult administration and ask, what's wrong with these numbers? So, in conclusion, a gentle reminder: it's the Board of Education, not just the administration, that is ultimately responsible for adopting the college's budget and deciding on any reductions. The committee, this committee, and the board play a vital role in public oversight. You are not here to rubber-stamp a proposal without knowing what's at stake. I believe that you are here to ensure transparency, accountability, and stewardship of the college's future. Thanks so much.
Good evening, members of the board and Budget Committee. My name is Adrian Mitchell. I spoke with you last week, and I did try to email to all of the Budget Committee members a memo yesterday. I'm not sure if you were able to receive it. I did receive a bounce back, so hopefully you were all able to receive it. I noticed there is something updated and posted on Board Docs that shows my memo with other attachments, but it's all in one PDF. So I have brought copies for you, which I will pass out. I do want to share that really appreciate all of your service, as well as your listening to some of the comments and concerns that have come up over the past couple of weeks, and really appreciate the work of the Budget and Finance Office in creating an updated, revised budget. I just became aware of it today around noon, so I haven't had a chance to analyze it fully, but I do think it is very noteworthy, and also it's really important to acknowledge all of the work and appreciation for the changes and updates in that new budget. So, one of the things I wanted to clarify from my memo is that our ending fund balance in the general fund has been increasing each year since FY '23, and has increased over $1 million over two years, which is a substantial amount. This demonstrates that we don't currently have a structural deficit. The new budget that is released really is, in my opinion, a strong improvement. However, we do have some concerns about the fact that it still includes $675,000 worth of program and service cuts, which are not specified, and we look forward to more information being provided. We do think that there are alternatives to program and service cuts, and would recommend that you take the time to continue to meet, and meet again next week to process a revised budget that does not rely on program and service cuts. Some of the alternatives include holding more of the vacancies open. There are, according to the figures presented by the administration in the full position list that was provided by the Budget Office, there were a total of $4.7 million in vacancies, or roughly $3.1 million in vacancies if you're looking just at the general fund. So there's substantial numbers of positions that are vacant, that are in the budget, that are resulting in some of the need for those cuts. In addition, I would recommend taking a look at the OPE calculations. The current increase from this year to next year still is a 13.7% increase, which is $3.9 million over the spending for this year, and there are a number of other areas where there could be small improvements to the budget or small adjustments that would obviate the need for those program and service cuts. I think I'm out of time, so thank you for your consideration, and I will pass these memos, which I hope you'll have some time to review.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is information review and discussion. So we'll begin with some more responses to our information requests from our previous meeting. President Volger, would you like to introduce the speakers or make a comment?
I'd very much like to. We have taken the questions that have been asked by Budget Committee members, and they are represented in the responses to information requests. We certainly always apologize for the time that it took to respond, but as you can see, their responses are pretty thorough, and so that takes time. And we were actually receiving questions as of today, almost an hour or so before this meeting. Thank you so much for sending those to us. We will endeavor to respond to those as well. What I'd like to do is ask the Budget Committee if you have specific questions or would like to go over any of the information in the responses to information requests, and we can go into more detail on that. And if not, then we can certainly go into just a brief slide deck that we've got and give you some information based on having heard everyone last week. We heard the Budget Committee, we heard our faculty union president and our guest here, Jim Arnold, and so we heard everyone last week, and we have an update for you. We've responded. Are there any questions? There are no questions, the responses to information requests, so... Well, maybe there are. I'll let the chair do that, take care of that.
Do we have questions?
Just saw these a few minutes before the meeting, so didn't get to read through all of them in detail. Got into the review, at least the ones that I had sent in, so thank you for putting those together. So, none at this time, but unfortunately, I didn't get to go through all of them in detail.
Okay.
I can continue on if you would like, or is there a handout?
I don't see any.
Okay, well, great. So I'm hoping that we can bring up the slide deck, and we'll start going through that. Thanks, Brett, a lot. Could we go to Slide 2? One of the points that we heard and questions, we heard loud and clear from several of the Budget Committee members last week, is that the Budget Committee members wanted us to not have a structural deficit in the budget for FY '26. And we heard that loud and clear, and we have responded. And what I will do is have Cara talk about the overview of that, and so you'll see the two different budgets here in this slide. We have the proposed budget, which is on the left side of this image, and on the right side, we're calling it the sustainable budget. So Cara?
Sure. Thank you. And so initially, as Dr. Volger said, we have our proposed budget on the left side, which had $104.5 million in revenues, and when you hear it in reference to Oregon budget law, it'll be the same as resources. Expenditures are going to be similar to requirements. So we had submitted a budget that had $108 million in expenditures, and so that's what created the $3.5 million deficit spending concern. Well, that included items that we think are forecasting. That's what we submitted. So we heard the committee, the feedback from both staff and the public, so we're now submitting a proposed sustainable budget. The revenues have not changed. We're still anticipating the same revenues of $104.5 million, but we are limiting our expenditure budget to $104.5 million with the end goal of sustaining the same beginning and ending fund balance of, it's $8.5 million, so it would be 8.2%. Doesn't quite get us to 10%, but we are not deficit spending within the same year.
This is not without challenges. This is a huge change from last week, and we want to show you, though, how we are going to get there, and that's the topic of the next slide. How will we do this? Next slide. So, ending deficit spending beginning in fiscal year 2026, how? Here's the plan. We would take $1.73 million from these four areas. The managers' benefit savings, I'm going to have Cara describe what that is. That's a savings to our budget. Programs and services, reducing the programs and services by $675,000. That is a bucket. Decisions have not been made about what that is. We certainly would be collaborating with the institution, getting lots of input on those, and going through a process whereby the guiding principles that we have, they are in the budget document on Page 8, I believe, and also the strategic goals, which are on Page 6, and we'd be looking at those and using those as the lens through which to make decisions. The IT operational alignments, this is something that we feel certain that we could use to find savings, and also position freezes. Now, these position freezes would be freezes going on into the future, and again, this is not without a lot of hand-bringing in a lot of ways, because we don't want to affect, we are a caring and compassionate institution, and we don't want to affect any of our services or any of our programs, any of our people. But when you're in a position like this with a deficit spending essentially for quite some time here at the institution, well before my arrival, well before presidents before me, and when you're in that position, then at some point, you can't make the numbers work, and that's where I believe we are. Cara, can you talk about the managers' benefit savings, what that is and how that would be some savings?
Sure. We are implementing a structural change of how we're looking at our managers' benefit savings, and Shane here from HR could also speak to this, but essentially, we are offering the same benefit package that will supplement the difference between a lower plan and a higher plan with difference in deductibles and out-of-pocket maximums being self-funded. So it's a change in the structure. It's something that was at a previous institution I was at. It was very successful and would allow some cost savings that we can implement come this October, but managers will not lose their benefits, and we're not intending for managers to pay more than they are in comparison to other staff, too.
The vacancy savings, a really important bucket here, and the vacancy savings, $1.77 million. This would add up to about the $3.5 million that you see there. You can see the FTE on positions. There may be other questions related to this. What we'd be also asking is to place that $1.77 million from the ending fund balance into a contingency account or a reserve account, essentially. We do not intend to use those funds at all next year. We do not intend to use them, and in fact, you could only use those funds if there is board approval, but we do not anticipate coming to the board to request that approval. I don't know if there are any questions about how we plan to reduce the budget, essentially by that $3.5 million next year.
Any questions? Go ahead, Zach.
Couple questions. So, I start with the programs and services. So that's to be determined. How would the board be included in approving any reductions in programs and services?
Well, the board delegates to the president the authority to run the college, essentially, through the college governance system and also through the administration, and so the how really is operational. Certainly, as I always keep the board informed about what is happening all along the way, I do that in multiple ways, and I would continue to do that.
Generally, the board approves the cutting of particular programs, academic programs, is that correct?
According to board policy, we can find the number of the board policy. I don't recall the number offhand, but according to the number of the board policy, the board approves programs, academic programs, as you might be aware, and the board does that every single year, but...
Is the flip true, to approve the discontinuation of programs?
Not my understanding.
Okay.
Yeah.
Ask about the position freezes. I believe that was for five positions. Would there be a possibility of increasing that number, or what would be the potential trade-offs of freezing 10 positions, for example, of the currently unfilled vacancies?
I'll let Cara speak to some of that.
Yes, that's a good question, and what would essentially happen in your scenario is we may end up freezing 10 positions. We are strategically permanently reducing $650,000. If we were to reduce, let's say that's four positions. If we were to reduce 10 positions, the difference would go towards our vacancy savings of $1.77 million, because we still have to make up vacancy savings of $1.7 million.
I don't know if I followed that. So, the vacancy savings, that assumes we're going to have, you know, a couple percentage of staff that have sort of turnover throughout the year?
Right.
And so, holding five positions vacant gives us $600,000 on top of that $1.7.
Right.
But holding an additional five vacant would go towards the bottom $1.7?
Vacancy savings, yes. Because what essentially is going to happen with vacancy savings, we are doing two things, right? We already made $2.7 million in reduction, so we already did withhold some positions that we were hoping to fill. So vacancy savings in natural attrition has been 2% to 2.5%, which is what we had anticipated as originally like $2.1 million. So we're purposely already holding $650,000 for the whole year, but what we need to do, I know, what we need to do is intentionally to make vacancy savings. So natural attrition gives us a certain amount. We have less positions to work with. We need to make sure, we don't hope, we have to make sure we make $1.7 million in vacancy savings, so we will have to strategically hold positions open until other positions come open through attrition to get to that guaranteed $1.8 million. That's what this budget does. So if we have 10 positions, we'll say these five will stay vacant the entire year regardless. These five, maybe we hold until we know we have other vacancies that can go towards them.
Okay, so the vacancy savings includes some position freezes, sort of temporarily?
Yes.
And then the five is permanent freezes for at least a year?
Yes.
Or more?
Exactly.
Now, taking a look at which positions to freeze was not an easy feat either. The college, I find that the college has many, many staffing needs all across the institution, so it's been very, very difficult to make these decisions.
Chair, can I just make a request? Last meeting that we had, the Budget Committee did not get a chance to really speak, and I'd just like to make a request that the Budget Committee members speak first, ask their questions, then ask the board if they have questions, and then start the cycle again, and so that we don't have multiple people speaking multiple times, but I would really like to hear from the Budget Committee. We have you for a very limited time. This is a pretty complex subject. You guys are the experts in the room, and I would really like to ask that the Budget Committee speak first.
Charlie.
Charlie, it is.
I was about to ask, is there a timer? I was going to say, because I probably have two more questions, but I'm happy to come back at the end, after others have a chance to speak.
Yeah, Jesse was going to help me kind of keep track of people again, like we did last time. I think that worked really well.
Yeah. So Charlie's been waiting there.
Thank you. Well, first off, I'd like to thank the administration, Dr. Volger and your staff for listening to what issues were raised last week, and for presenting us with something to have meaningful discussion about. I do want to pick around the edges a little bit more on the vacancy savings. I think what I heard is there's positional freezes, it's about five FTE, and then the positional savings would result in an additional 12.4 FTE. Is that, am I summarizing that right?
Yes. Well, the equivalent of $1.7 million in vacancy savings is an estimated, based on an average of everything across the board in general fund, of 12.4 FTE. So our goal is to attain vacancy savings of $1.7 million, which is equal to 12.4 positions.
Gotcha. And then, I guess, as you think about that going forward, we know that there's probably some unfilled positions, and in the original budget, there were some intentions of filling some new positions. So, from a practicality side of things, I'll paraphrase what I heard and make sure that I understand that. We're going to hold open $650,000 as positional freezes right now, so no new hires. And the additional $1.7 is these are anticipated positions that will be coming open, and we won't rehire for them, and new positions that were approved in the original budget that we won't be hiring for. Is that correct?
It could likely be a combination of a few. For example, one position that we have authorized as a new position is a public safety officer. That's because we don't have sufficient staffing for what we're required, contractually required to have on campus, so we will move forward with a public safety officer, and as we have attrition, we may hold other positions open to make sure we can retain that public safety officer, as an example.
Gotcha. So it gives you flexibility to move staff where you need to, but with a target that here's kind of our target to hit.
Correct.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Was there any other Budget Committee members? It's hard to see. Yeah.
Did you want to have anything? I just have a quick comment. I think, I want to say thank you to management for turning this around quickly. I think it's nice to hear that our concerns were heard, and you came back with a solution. I don't want to downplay that. Anytime you make cuts, it's going to hurt, and I think it's challenging for management to be put in that position. So I appreciate you taking that on, and yeah, I think that's all I have.
Okay. Kevin, could you want to?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, these conversations, I'm guessing, are taking place across the state in our sister community college organizations. This is not a unique situation to Lane Community College by any stretch. I wrote a statement, followed by a series of questions, and I just want to highlight the, this year's budget cycle, in my mind, is really characterized by greater-than-usual budget contingencies, storm clouds, if you will. We've got storm clouds and uncertainty with state funding, given the economic forecast that came out late last week, I believe it was, which downgraded the economic forecast for the state, which could affect the amount of state support going to community colleges, including Lane Community College. We have some really big unknowns in terms of what the effects of federal policies, if any, or tariffs, you know, if any effects. We just don't know. And then finally, it's possible that we won't, the state won't have their budget done, which might mean that we would have to, you know, put our finger in the wind and come up with a budget without really knowing what our state support's going to be. So I'm really concerned about those issues, and I appreciate the quick turnaround on a more conservative and more fiscally responsible budget. I appreciate that, and I hope that we can come to an agreement soon on a budget that does not include deficit spending because of the budget contingencies that at least I'm concerned about. Thank you.
Steven, next.
Thank you. Couple questions. Also express my appreciation for, you know, a lot of change in a short period of time. The, I'm having a little difficulty, maybe similar to others, to understand the difference between position freezes and vacancy savings. Why wouldn't we just say, you know, we are now looking for vacancy savings, whatever that total would be, you know, 2.5?
Yeah. Good question. The position freezes, again, are positions we will, on our vacancy list, go designate $648,000 worth of positions that will be froze for the year and for all intents and purposes off the roster. The vacancy savings may start with positions on the list that we hope to fill as other positions turn over. So it's a difference between purposely holding this position open the entirely year versus having a flexible roster of, we would like to fill this one as soon as something else comes open, and we start to see some vacancy savings, we'll move this up and hire this one, we'll move this one up and hire this one. These ones, we won't touch.
I see.
It's a way for us to keep it straight.
Yeah, and then the follow-up question on the vacancy savings. So the way I understood it is that you are taking like a, you know... you are taking like a, you know, a bet, in a sense, based on, you know, historical information, statistics, whatever, that says, well, we'll probably end up with this number of, of people who leave during the year that we could translate into roughly 1.7, right? So it's a little bit of a bet, therefore it's a little bit of a risk. What, you know, if it was a weird year, what would you do?
And that's, that's the intention behind asking for a contingency budget account. And let's play out your scenario, worst case scenario, we get to middle of the year, and we think we can only anticipate 1.4 million dollars in vacancy savings, not 1.7. We come to the board, and that's where we have to have a discussion of, will the board allow us to move that money out of contingency and keep these positions, or do we need to go back and look at reducing the staff?
Thank you. And the last question is, last week, right, when we had the, whatever, the original budget that was proposed, there was, you know, the talk of some, I forget the number, 204, 206 positions. And a lot of that, as my understood, even though we didn't have the detail, was about, you know, program expansions or new program certificates, et cetera, that we had agreed to throughout the course of the year, and now it comes time to staff them. So how does, are we still doing that? Or how is, how are these new programs that we have, or expansions of existing programs that we hope to launch and nurture next year affected by this sustainable budget?
You know, I will defer to my counterpart Shelley to answer that.
To answer your question, the programs that we're moving forward with, for example, respiratory therapy, that program is supported by a grant, so that's not an issue. And, you know, our intent is to kind of go back and, as Kara was saying, to take a look at some assumptions. But many of these positions where we are moving forward with in key areas. So for example, aviation has significant growth, carpentry, things of that nature. That's still something that we're planning for. But we will be looking at other assumptions and seeing where we might have to make adjustments.
Dan.
Dan.
Uh, thank you. I apologize again on the road. I went back and listened to the last board meeting, went through the notes, and I, I felt that there's a lot of really good points on, I don't know what they call sides, they're just different viewpoints that we kind of have at the moment. And I, I really liked the idea of having some sort of a compromise, if, if we wanna call it that as well, on kind of the two schools of thought that we're, we're kind of coalescing around here. And I thought that, you know, Steve brought up a really good point at the end of the meeting about, there are students who have made decisions or are gonna, or are trying to recruit to make decisions to make LCC their home. And we want to be a leader in that forefront, because we have competition within the state and we have competition around, around the country. And so, but we also want to temper that with the notion that we can't have all the things that we want necessarily, especially if it means for sure cutting program or services at the, on the, based on an assumption that we don't know yet. At the same time, you know, Kevin couldn't have said it better, I think, in terms of the just depressing view that continues to come out of Washington DC in terms of where we're at, in terms of our budget, and how, how do you plan around no North Star to guide on? And so, I guess my thought was, is that if we narrowed the, the, the open positions to the most pressing fields to have the most growth. So nursing, we mentioned carpentry, we mentioned aviation. That's about 10 or 11 positions by, by backup nap and math. And if we said, alright, those are the ones we're gonna focus on, and put the other ones kind of in a stasis, where if the funding happens, you know, in, in July, or it isn't as draconian as we think it is, then we can come back to the drawing board and add more on to it. But then we are not in deficit spending, we're not in a, a position of, of having to do real world cuts for an assumption that we don't know yet have it in. We're adhering to both Kevin and the other, other board members' feelings on, on the need to be competitive and, and strike that balance of a compromise. And maybe this was addressed earlier, I went through kind of a spotty reception area. But if, if the staff can kind of guide me on, on the thinking along those lines, that'd be great.
Yeah, and Dan, those are all really good points, and those are how we're looking at that. That's kind of exactly the point at where we're at. We have, I'm looking at our vacant position list, so we have 11 faculty on, 11 vacant faculty positions. So when we say, and we have other positions on the list too, but when we say we're doing position freezes, we're freezing positions that, not necessarily just faculty, but classified, that could be, that will not have that direct impact on enrollment. And so that's where we have that strategic discussion. And we also have, and this is where Shelley could come in, but we have U round registration that just opened, which is one of the goals, to help us figure out and align what we need for staffing. We also have the ability to access part-time faculty and part-time staffing. You know, we have contractual requirements we do need to consider there, but we do have the ability to access that, assuming there is part-time faculty available to access for those classes. Did you have anything, Shelley?
No, but I think that you characterized it very well, is what we're trying to do now is to, you know, make the smartest decisions on where we need to invest. And we are in a different position now than what we were at when we made these decisions. And I believe that was in February, when we made that list. And so we are going to see where we can pull back in certain areas, where we can rely on part-time faculty, maybe where we can just wait a little bit and see how things pan out. But in the areas in which we are growing and where we have made commitments to students, we're absolutely confident that we can continue to do that in those, those specific areas.
I just wanted to close by, again, also thanking staff, turning around an entire budget in what is amounted to six days, including a weekend, is not easy. And it is appreciated by me, and I know everyone else as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
I'm fine with Zach to go.
That's me now. There were two other ideas mentioned for potential savings, and I was hoping to speak into those. So one was on.
Stuck, if you could speak into my.
Sorry. There were two other ideas mentioned for potential savings, and I was during comment, hoping you could speak to each of those. So one is with regards to materials and services, and if there's any opportunities to reduce materials and service growth. And the other was related to OPE, other personnel expenses. And it looked like we underspent on OPE this year, and then we were sort of growing from our budgeted amount rather than from what we spent. And I was just wondering if you could comment on sort of the difference there and why we're budgeting towards that higher amount rather than sort of growing from the, what we actually spent.
Sure. First, materials and services, what we have in our estimated change in our sustainable budget does reduce materials and services $200,000. And what I will say, when you have 85% of your general fund budget in staffing, it makes it hard to reduce materials and services any more than we already have. What is also included in that whole lump is anything that we may need for utilities or travel for staff, it's training, it includes a whole slew of things, and we have reduced it about $1 million. Jonathan's reminded me, last, this year, we went in and did a, if you remember, we had proposed a million dollar reduction, majority of that came from materials and services. So we reduced it back a level, now we're going to have to reduce it back another level. So we're, we're, we're getting that down to the point where it's going to be really challenging for areas to keep up with what they have. So it would be hard to continue to decrease that. I don't know if they'll have everything they need to do what they need to do. The second piece with OP, OP is calculated directly based on what our roster of staff is, based on the percentage of OP. So as we see vacancy savings, and that's where you'll see on the spreadsheet, we reduced OP by 1, OP as a whole by 1.3 million, because it'll proportionally have savings when we have vacancy savings. So we have an OPE rate on every full-time person sitting in this room is 65%, 65%. So every part-time is 38%. So as we have less people on staff, we also have less we pay in OPE costs, so they go down at equal rates. The only caveat of OPE is it does also include, the PERS bond payment is included in the OPE rate. We are required to pay that $13 million regardless of how many people we have on staff. So there's things in there that are set amounts. And it, that's just a piece that's built in that rate.
So if I'm following, the position freezes and the vacancy savings have reduced OPE built into them?
Yes.
And then there were other OPE reductions? Where would I, where would I see those in these numbers?
Not in, well, they're, they're on the, the attached handout. You'll see that in our proposed reduction, has 1.3 million taken out of OPE. That's in relation to what we will see. Because the position freezes includes OPE based on those positions will hold, the OPE will go down. The vacancy savings, the positions that will be vacant, will have an OPE savings as they're vacant.
Okay, thank you.
I'll just say also that with regard to MNS, you know, one of the Q12 questions that we have for institutional climate, you know that that is a goal here, one of my, our priorities here at the institution, is about having the materials necessary to do my job. And so we thought about that very, very carefully, and we really thought that we, because of some, some reductions that we took, I believe it was this year, that it was just, it was just something that we could not do anymore.
Okay, thank you.
I want to follow up on Zach's question, because I, I thought the, at least the idea that was suggested by faculty leadership that was interesting. So I just wanted to explore it a little bit more. My understanding of, of the, of the suggestion is, was that the OPE rate that we include in the budget, that is somewhat arbitrary, or that you have some discretion, right? So the suggestion is, well, instead of contributing 65% per staff, why not 64, 63, 62, and what does that, that savings translate into? And I'm not suggesting it's a good or bad idea, I don't really know, but I'd like to hear what your thoughts are on that.
Yeah, and so we have a blended rate, but within OPE is all the required things we need to pay. It has workers' comp, it has PFMLA, it has unemployment, it has OWEB benefits, it has PERS, both the PERS that are paid by the college, and then the PERS bond payment. So we go through and calculate, what do we think those costs will be? And, but it's all based on what the roster is. So the estimation, we go through and do a calculation of estimation of what is going to land in the year. And we've looked historically, Jonathan and I have looked historically how the college has worked out in that percentage, that flat percentage. There has been years where the college underfunded it. So the worst case would be for us to underfund it. The best case would be, maybe you end up with 200,000 in this account that we set aside, and that's where we set aside a PERS, a PERS holding account. That's where you see those come in, and the advantage of, let's say it ends, we're, we're hoping to break even with just a little bit in there. But that depends on how many staff we have. So the less staff we have, the less we have in this OPE account. And if we end up with 200,000 at the end of the year, we'll put it in the PERS reserve. But the advantage of being just over, and I think we might just be barely over, would be that in '27, '28, our, one of our two PERS bonds are going to come off the books. And that means we will, the year that that comes off and we have the final payment, we will start paying into PERS for what that savings did nutrition, we will almost have a double payment in one of those years. So the college has been exploring whether or not we wanna go look at that, but the interest rates are bad right now. So nobody, the financial advisors across the state are saying, we don't wanna go look at that. So we need to start strategically discussing what, which we can later. But we need to start strategically having that discussion now to plan for that in a year and a half, because that's when that's going to come through. So we, we do not want to underfund it, because we will be in a worse position. And if we overfund it by a little bit, I'm comfortable saying as a finance person, we will set that aside for PERS. If, let's say we, at the end of the year, also have 200,000, and the college decides we don't wanna set that aside, we can also use that for part of the vacancy savings or some of the other areas that we're not meeting.
That makes sense. Thank you. The other question I had was, with, I'm thinking about all of this in context of the three, four, five-year plan that you shared with us last week, right? So this would relieve some pressure on the out-years, right? Because we're, basically, we would be, should we agree to this? You know, making more serious whatever cuts now, and therefore a little less intensive cuts perhaps in the out-years. Does that suggest then that these, on the, these right now look like one time, you know? But really, maybe we should be thinking of them as, as permanent, ongoing, sort of built-in, and then we would layer additional things in next year and the year after. So paying that we were going to push off, perhaps, you know, under the other budget till next year and subsequent years, we're absorbing some of that now, and softening the blow perhaps to some extent in subsequent years.
You're, you're absolutely right. I think that tees up the next slide, so if you could go there.
There was more slides.
And so I'm going to have Kara walk through this particular slide, and to show what's really embedded in here. Because again, these are, these are very, very difficult, difficult decisions and difficult presentations for us because of the reductions that we're seeing into the future. But at some point, it does level out, and, and we're really on a good path. Kara?
Yes, so the, the, the path with the sustainable budget we're proposing now does put us on track to not be in deficit spending in '26. So the forecast that you saw from the third quarter, that had us projected at a deficit spending in '26, and it did. So we right-size that and get back to non-deficit spending. We continue on the path of $3.2 million reduction in '27, '28, and '29. We lead to, by the end of '29, an 11.1% ending fund balance, based on that forecast we gave you last time. So again, the two conditions have to be met. We meet our budget that we're proposing to you today, and we continue forward with the 3.2 million. And that's where we are able to get on track. And mind you, if for some reason the college were to suddenly come into another million dollars of ongoing revenue next year and the year after, then we reduce by 2.2 million. So 3.2 is the target of, of how we have to make that. But the important key is, these have to be ongoing changes, whether it's revenue or expenditures, and that we have to follow the plan. But then this is why we are saying this is our four-year plan that we're proposing to the board, and it follows what we gave you in the third quarter forecast.
Kevin, sorry.
I have a question for Kara. So just in rough terms, a 3.2 million is, is about a 3% reduction?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, thank you.
If revenues were to come in significantly lower from state legislature, or higher from the state legislature, or from higher enrollment, how would that be looked at? And how would those, we either deal with additional cuts or adding things back?
And so this plan is, is going to have to be somewhat mobile. So as we continue to bring you forecasts, we'll keep in mind that we are doing the $3.2 million reduction year to year in what we're doing this year. If revenues come in higher or lower, we will have to maneuver based on what that needle looks like.
Yeah, we're pledged to do that. We, we are going to do that. We're hoping for a windfall. If you have some ideas, please let us know. And I'm serious about that. We are, we're hoping for all of that. And we, this is not without some difficulty, obviously, but this is a very talented institution with a lot of opportunity in, in the state and the community. And I'm incredibly optimistic. I wake up that way every morning.
Larissa, and I see you too, Charlie, but we'll go with Larissa first.
Thank you. Thanks so much. First, I want to express my appreciation for staff and leadership in this quick turnaround and the work that you've done to respond to the Budget Committee members' requests and the board members' requests for a different outlook. I appreciate the, the hard work you've done, and I also acknowledge that this will be hard work every year for years to come. And I echo other board members' comments in gesturing outwards towards the larger context that we are in. And I'll hold some hope that there will be less chaos at some point in the future, so that we can look more significantly, maybe more at growth and less at training. And to that end, I wanted to ask about the growth cap that is, I, I have a very tenuous graph on the concept, but, you know, I understand it was capped at 3% growth rate, when growth is really, growth, growth of enrollment is really, you know, unless someone wants to fly in with a huge gift, and we can cultivate big donors, that's really how we will grow the enrollment, grow, grow revenue, that kind of thing. Can you talk a little bit about that 3% growth cap, and if there, I wonder if there are opportunities to advocate for a change in that policy? Yeah, that's the question.
Thank you so much, Budget Committee member Ennis. We really, really appreciate that, and I am going to ask for a few of us to talk a little bit about that, that growth factor. And we'll start with Kara.
Sure. And essentially what that relates specifically to is the community, community college state supports fund. And what it does is we're funded And what it does is we're funded per F T E. So per enrollment, we have, that is a full time equivalent, there's a calculation. We're funded up to a certain point, but then they also cap based on a three year growth. They say the state has a growth factor that says it's two point five three percent this year. So if our F T E was originally budgeted, and I'm making up these numbers because I don't remember them off the top of my head, but if we're budgeted at ten thousand F T E, we can grow by two point five three percent above that F T E and get additional funded. What ends up happening right now is when we have larger enrollment growth in the two point five three percent, they're what we would call unfunded F T E. So we don't receive additional state funding for that. That's not included in the three year rolling average of what we're funded. And so those, those over, overgrowth F T E just for the state calculation are included in tuition, right? So we collect tuition for it. We don't collect any more in property taxes, we don't collect any more in this, the Community College State Support Fund. So that, that's where we're figuring what that looks like. And for, and so far, the good news for Lane, we are reaching that cap and we are exceeding it, which is good news for us because it means our enrollment growth is up.
And there was, the second part of your question was really about advocacy and how we might change this picture. And I wanted to, wanted to have Brett Rolet jump in on that.
Thank you. The funding formula is is set through an administrative rule process with the Higher Ed Coordinating Commission. So it would take action by the heck to change the funding formula. And we're about one year into the new formula. So the likelihood that they will make a significant change in the next year is is probably not great. They have a three year kind of period where they're rolling into this new outcomes based formula where ten percent of the support fund is is awarded based on performance metrics. And that was a three year kind of window to to fully implement that. So I would expect the heck to to let that fully implement before they would look at making significant changes. But this, the the issue with the growth cap is something that a lot of colleges are facing right now. And some institutions like, quote, Community College, their growth has really been in the high cost programs, the C T E programs. And they're seeing growth of some of their programs exceed twenty percent year over year. And so when you're capped at two and a half percent, that can be really expensive for colleges. And it kind of forces you to look at how you grow and whether you really want to grow in certain areas or whether you should be kind of prioritizing areas that that don't cost as much.
Yep, I got Charlie.
Can I just have a quick response to that?
Sure.
Very, very quickly, thank you. Thank you very much to everyone for answering that question. I would just put out there that if, in the next couple of years after the hack implements this new process, if it does seem like an advocacy effort will help open some eyes or minds about that three percent cap, sign me up.
Thank you. Charlie?
Yeah, thank you. So looking at this, this is, this is good to see. And I always like things to go from the southwest to the northeast on on graphs like this. So that's, that's encouraging. I guess my question is is twofold. One is, since I'm not, I'm not overly familiar with how Oregon budget laws and things work. If you guys were to have a surplus during any of these periods of time, right? So year twenty, twenty twenty seven, you have a hundred and ten million dollars, it comes in as revenue. That is those excess, those excess balances. Is there, is there a mechanism with, within the budget process that the board can reappropriate funds for programs that are in need of funds during the year? Or how does, how does that really work? So that's the first question. And the second question is, if you think about typically, this is this, this is kind of advanced level forecasting. Tip, tip, they'll see a, well, an optimistic budget, a realistic budget, and then the nuclear, the nuclear budget where things go really off the rails. How would you characterize this level of budget forecasting at this stage? How, what's your comfort level? And is this something that you feel is most likely scenario or is this towards a more conservative case?
Kara, would you like to start on that? Because I, to me, Charlie, this is a realistic budget that we're presenting. We don't have, I would be reluctant to present something that would be the nuclear budget, as you called it. So no, for me, this is, this would be the realistic budget.
Yes, and yeah, I would echo that. And I would, the first part of your question, if the college were to have additional revenues beyond what we anticipated, we are eligible to go for a supplemental budget hearing. So we post something, we let the public have input and then we bring to the board. We're asking for additional budget authority because we received more revenues in these areas and here's how we'd like to spend it. Or maybe it stays in the ending fund balance. So yes, there is an option to do that.
Okay, Dan was next.
You may have covered this, and I heard you speak a little bit to him, but I don't know that I heard a really detailed answer to it. So we've, we've scratched the pad on the positions from classified to to instruction. But we don't seem to have been scratching the pad too much on on management. And if the instruction numbers are going down, then the ratio to manager to and to, to whom they're managing is is also going down as well. Is there not any wisdom to having everyone scratch the pad equally? Is there, is there, is there a basis for that that I'm not hearing or seeing? Can you provide a little insight on that?
Yes, so based on management F T E, if you look at our entire roster, management comprised thirteen percent of our roster. Right now, we're looking at general fund. We have two vacant manager positions in general fund. One of those is probably in the process of being offered, which is the Dean of Humanities position, which has been an interim position for the last year. So the college has actually had that one on the roster. The other vacant position is the A V P for Culture and Belonging, which has been a high priority for the board and the president and the college. So those are the only two options. If we wanted to dig deeper into managers, we do have vacancies in areas that are grant and Fund Nine that do not affect general fund or are, cannot be backfilled to general fund. We would have to do a reduction in force of manager positions.
Thank you.
Yes?
Denise Diamond is waving her arm, but she's not.
Well, she is, okay, Denise.
Hi, thank you. Just going back to this growth cap. Is it, are enrichment programs that do garner tuition? Do I remember correctly that they're, they're not rolled into what's, what is part of the calculation of a growth cap? Do I remember that correctly or not?
So Denise, are you talking about non-credit F T E?
Right, right, right.
We do receive F T E for non-credit programs and they are included in the growth factor.
Okay, and that's all categories of non-credit, including enrichment?
Not all categories. Shelley can speak to which ones are not, but it's not all categories, but it's most of them.
Okay, so I'm just wondering if the ones that are not a part of the growth cap calculation offer the college an opportunity to get increased revenue without, without the calculation of the growth cap? In other words, you can only grow up to a certain point. So you need to be able to see the areas in which revenue comes in, but isn't part of that calculation.
We couldn't agree with you more. We certainly will take a look at that. It can be called community education also, for example, and that's something that we can certainly take a look at.
Do we know how much revenue we get in that category now?
We can certainly get that to you, Denise. I don't know off the top of my head.
Thank you.
You can go after me, but I'm gonna jump into the, a question real quick. So, well, first of all, thank you for all the revisions. That's an incredible amount of work in a short period of time. To Kevin's point of other, other colleges doing the same thing, so are businesses. I had one of the hardest weeks of my life and my career because we're going through exercises like this, tariffs, unknown funding. And so, you know, it's, it's really prudent to, to have a realistic budget. So that's, that's a lot of work to turn around, so thank you. I was curious, how often do you report out, you know, actuals compared to your budget? And because that's something that, you know, I would like to follow and something that got brought up, I believe, last week in public comment on seeing how things are going. How, how often does that occur?
Right now, that occurs quarterly.
Quarterly, okay. Steve, you were next.
Just a quick question, would you remind us the enrollment increases that are assumed on this four year path?
Two percent. And that is working in collaboration with our institutional research department, based on the landscape, things that are happening, two percent.
And that's splendid, that includes your, your program increases, like I think you mentioned nursing and aviation. Yes?
So echoing the, thank you for the Hercule, Herculean, I'm not gonna say that word right, somebody else can say it for me, effort to do all this. This is amazing. I've dug through as much of it as I could possibly do. It's crazy for me right now trying to manage a new budget for my agency as well on all this uncertainty. And I don't have rules and laws and and public hearings to contend with, you know? So I, I applaud this effort. So if I understand everything that's being presented to us now, that in the sustainable budget, we have something that we can at least plan for, right? We don't have any certainty of what we possibly could get. We have some good guesses, but even the good guesses, we still don't know. The state still doesn't know. They keep changing their mind based on what then they, their uncertainty that they don't know. So we just keep crossing our fingers, doing the prayer sticks, whatever your mojo is, to try to at least keep us flat. I mean, I mean, that's gotten to the point where we're just asking for what we had before, just, that's all, just give us what we have before. So, so with the cutbacks, with the contingency fund, you know, I'm pretty confident that even though I know that's a little unusual or uncomfortable for some members to have operational six hundred and seventy thousand dollars in cutbacks, but in relationship to the entire budget, that's not a lot. I'm also confident that we'll get reports. And if there's anything that's so alarming, that is just unbelievably obnoxious to us and the community, we will be having a meeting about it and a conversation about it at the board level. So I'm feeling really comfortable with where you guys got our sustainable budget. And I'm, I'm just thankful for that because I was, I left our last meeting feeling a bit uncomfortable even myself. And knowing what you were doing, I was still uncomfortable going, oh, I don't feel like I want to approve a three point five million dollar deficit spending. So I like the plan, I like the set aside, I like that we will be the ones that are deciding how we spend that set aside, if it has to be spent. Is there any, I mean, I know this is a weird question, given that you're doing the presentation. But now that you've heard questions, now you've heard, is there any lingering piece of information that you would like us to make sure that we know as a takeaway from this meeting, going into the board meeting to do budget approvals and all that kind of stuff?
Well, we would certainly appreciate the confidence of the budget committee and then the confidence and support of the board when it gets to the board level. And we are going to do everything in our power to reinforce through this process the culture of the institution, which is a caring culture, a kind culture. And we're going to be doing that through this process as well.
Somebody else?
I mean, I don't have any other questions that I think would be answered in the next, by extending this another week.
Yeah.
I'll just throw that out there.
But anybody else, any? No?
This is my first budget meeting committee, so I don't know what the next steps are. Is this a process where the budget committee makes a recommendation or is there a motion that can be made?
Yeah, we can add a motion.
Is that the?
Yeah, we can add a motion.
Steve, did you have one?
No, I don't, I don't, well, I could do that, but I was just gonna say from having been through these a handful of times, often when we get to the end of questions and people feel satisfied, which we may or may not be, but it sort of feels a little bit that way, there's often a motion to approve or do something. And usually it comes from a budget committee member and not a board member because the board has the opportunity to go through this whole process a second time, you know, after this concludes. So we, that's just the normal, it doesn't have to be that way, but that's often what we are looking for.
And Chair Member Kimball has his hand raised. I don't know if that's new.
Charlie?
Yeah, I'd be, I'd be willing to take the position of making a motion to accept the updated budget as presented tonight for the twenty six fiscal year.
Okay, do we have a second? Or Carrie wanted to?
I'm sorry to be technical, but we do have specific technical language we need because we also need the budget committee to recommend the taxing authorization.
Okay, I can, I can read that, yeah. So I'd like to add the motion to move that the Lane Community College District Budget Committee approve the twenty five, twenty twenty six fiscal year amended proposed budget as discussed by the Budget Committee for All Funds totaling two hundred and eighty two million, eight hundred and forty nine thousand, three hundred and thirty eight dollars.
I second that.
Any discussion?
I just wanted to clarify before we vote that this number, the two hundred and eighty two thousand, that is this sustainable budget. Okay.
Yes, to clarify, that's the full budget with all of the other funds.
Yeah.
Oh, and Kara?
I think there's a second part of the motion we'll need you to either do together or separately, just being that.
I was gonna do them separately.
Perfect.
Do that. Celia, do you wanna call?
I think there's discussion usually after, if Zach has his hand up and usually after the.
Sorry, Zach, I didn't see you.
My, I think my only remaining concern at this point is the unspecified cuts to programs and services. I think that it's important that, just as the board approves new programs and services, that we should also see, you know, programs and services that we're gonna cut before that's implemented. So I think potentially when the board approves the budget, I might have a motion to that effect. But that's all at this time and I look forward to approving the budget. And thank you very much for the amazing work that went into it.
Was there any other discussion? Anybody?
Oh. I think Charlie had it.
Charlie?
Nope. Okay.
No? You're like this big for me, sorry. Can we turn the screen off? Hey, there you go. All right.
Is that everybody?
Yes.
Okay, there's not like, you know, screen two, okay?
Yeah. All right, Celia, now do you wanna call roll? Kevin Altucher?
Yes.
Denise Diamond?
Yes.
Larissa Ennis?
Yes.
Will Gray?
I'm staying.
Dan Isaacson?
Yes.
Charles Kimball?
Yes.
Steve Mattel?
Yes.
Zach Mulholland?
Yes.
Amber Patterson?
Yes.
Ron Preisler?
Yes.
Julie Weisman?
Yes.
Jesse Williams?
Yes.
Okay, motion has passed. The second part, the motion is I move that Lane Community College District Budget Committee approve property taxes for the twenty twenty four, twenty, or twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six fiscal year at the rate of sixty one ninety one per one thousand of assessed value for the permanent rate tax levy and in the amount of thirteen million, nine hundred and eighty two thousand, three hundred and nine dollars for the general obligation bond levies.
Wow, that is a mouthful.
Yeah.
I second that.
Is there any discussion?
I just have a question. Is this any different from before?
No.
No, the permanent tax rate is year to year and the other one is the general.
That's awesome.
So we can't change this to like a dollar and fix everything?
I wish you could, I think it's statutorily set.
Ah, all right. It was worth a shot.
Constitutionally barred from increasing our permanent tax rate.
That was worth a shot.
Any other discussion than changing the constitution? All right, Celia, can you please call and roll? Kevin Al Tucker?
Yes.
Denise Diamond?
Yes.
Larissa Ennis?
Yeah.
Dan Isaacson?
Yes.
Charles Kimball?
Yes.
Will Gray?
Yes.
Steve Mattel?
Yes.
Zach Mulholland?
Yes.
Amber Patterson?
Yes.
Ron Preisler?
Yes.
Julie Weisman?
Yes.
Jesse Williams?
Yes.
All right. With that, I guess the meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, Budget Committee.
Thank you.
For all your work, I really appreciate it.
Thank you all for your.
The May 21st first work session will now be called to order. Celia, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Kevin Al Tucker?
Here.
Denise Diamond?
Here.
Steve Mattel?
Here.
Zach Mulholland?
Here.
Julie Weisman?
Here.
And Board Member Austin Foldnagy is excused this evening. Okay, we are moving on to the adoption of the agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt the May 21st board work session agenda?
Still moved.
Okay, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, nay. And that passes unanimously. Please note that the equity lens has been provided for the board's reference. Do we have any questions or comments to the responses to information requests? Seeing none. The next topic of discussion is board policies. President Bulger, will you please introduce the speaker?
Yes, we do have some, we have a information about renumbering and we want to give an update about the renumbering that was asked by a board member some time ago and we have an update on that renumbering process. So Brett Rolin?
Hi, good evening, Chairman Holland, President Bulger, members of the board. This evening, I bring to you, as you recall, you requested at the April 16th work session information on the renumbering process. And so in the packet, you will find three attachments. The first one is a list of our current policies, all of the policies, and it's divided into the three-digit legacy policies as well as the four-digit OCCA policies. The next attachment is a crosswalk that shows of the three-digit policies, what their four-digit policy number will, would be. And then the third attachment is a consolidated list of with the new four-digit policy numbers, what the policy library would look like. And so I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. If the board supports this moving forward, the process would basically be similar to how you approved the policies earlier this month, where we would retire the three-digit numbers and adopt four-digit policies with identical language.
This is an effort for us to accelerate the process of retiring the three-digit policies or integrating them and having one policy library.
One of the reasons, one of the things that happened was that we didn't even know we had a policy because we were looking at the top one and then it was buried down below. So it would be nice to have them all. Do we need to make a, can we make a motion that just simply makes this crosswalk change before we review each and every policy out of order? Or do we have to do a policy review before those changes are made?
I spoke to Karen Smith at OCCA about this, just to kind of get some backup on, on what we were thinking. And her recommendation is that we can move forward with the renumbering. We don't have to review each of them individually, but what I have done has, is basically take the date of last review of the three-digit number and we'll use that for the four-digit numbers. So we, we will still bring to you policies that you haven't reviewed the actual language within the last five years. Those will be the ones that take priority and those are the policies that you'll see next year.
I see, that's acceptable.
Any other questions or discussion? Thank you so much for that work.
Thanks.
Is that, is that all for you?
Well, we have one, the next agenda item, I'll.
Okay, I'll scroll down here. As a continuation of the first topic, the next item for discussion is board policy review. President Bulger, will you please introduce the speaker?
And we have some additional policies as a first read for the board this evening.
All right, thank you. This evening, we bring to you five policies. Four of the policies were scheduled for their regular review. That is Board Policy 20, 25, 40, and 725.
And what will those new numbers be?
The new numbers for Board Policy 20, it would be 4035.
Oh, you know it.
For 25, it would be 4030. For Board Policy 40, it'd be 4370. And 725 will be 5025. But the fifth policy, the student representation, there was a request from President Gibson to take a look at this policy. And her request was just to add language that the student representative on the, the board, the ex officio member would partake in the same orientation that the rest of the board participates in. Other than that, the only other real change to language was in Board Policy 40. And it was updating the college mission, which had changed since the last time the board reviewed this policy. So there's some slight changes there in the language and then a couple other small changes. But other than that, there's no other changes to the other policies.
Any questions or discussion?
I just want to say that I really like what Sophie did on this policy for students a lot and, and very much in favor of that. So thanks for bringing that forward.
Looks like it's going to be a quick one tonight.
Thanks for taking it easy on me.
Oh, well, you passed the test on the four-digit number. I remember the rest.
Okay. The final item of discussion is high school recruitment and college now. President Bulger, will you please introduce the speaker?
This has been a topic that's, the, the board has desired to bring to a board meeting. We brought it here to the work session and we will turn it over to Dr. Joyce probably to introduce, no, no, Dr. Tinkum, excuse me, to, excuse me, it's going to be Dr. Joyce and Dr. Tinkum introducing this because we have academic and student affairs, academic affairs and student affairs working together on this. We're incredibly proud of the relationships and partnerships that we have with our high schools in the county and really, really excited to present this information to you this evening.
So we are here with you this evening to give you a showcase at a very high level of our high school partnerships. It does represent a collaboration between student affairs and academic affairs and that's typical of most higher education institutions. We go on to the next slide. Before we get started, I just want to lay some groundwork or just, just some, talk about some common vocabulary. Early college is a topic that's, that's very near and dear to my heart. I've, I've done a lot of work in that area throughout my career. And so it's always really important that we just know what we're talking about. So I'm going to, I've, I've gotten this information from a, a woman I learned a lot from, her name is Nancy Hoffman, and she works for Jobs for the Future and she did a significant amount of work with, in the seventies and the eighties, really developing these early college programs, starting in the East Coast, typically specifically with City University of New York. They've got this huge program. And so it's important to understand what it is we're talking about. So imagine early college on a normal curve. And so an early college is many activities that's very intentional, that gives a K through 12 student a significant experience with a higher education institution. It doesn't necessarily result in credit. So for example, we have the Trades Expo here on campus just last week. We had, yeah, we had students doing all of these things, learning about things and that's helps us with our recruitment, but it's not dual enrollment. Now, dual enrollment is the enrollment of high school students at a college level credit while still enrolled in high school. That is our College Now program, which our staffer is going to talk to you about. So that's essentially, again, so dual enrollment is part of early college, but early college isn't necessarily dual enrollment. And why it's important to know this is sometimes we use these terms like early college high school. Well, early college high school is a pathway or a separate school that typically awards students with an associate degree when they graduate from high school. So there's lots of terminology out there. So I just wanted to give you the lay of the land so that you all kind of know what we're talking about. And we're going to ask for you to hold questions until we get through the presentation.
Thank you. I'm going to talk just for a little bit about the benefits of early college. First of all, it's associated with improved college and high school success, stronger college and career readiness, and students become much more familiar with college expectations. They have improved confidence and they also learn more about critical thinking when they're, when they're in early college. This also impacts our underrepresented students in the same way. They get more familiar with college and think, I can do this. I see people like me and, and that, that's one of those huge areas. If you can get underrepresented students in early, it's a difference maker. It does improve relationships between K-12 and the college. And it is, I'm going to introduce a couple of people in a, in a little bit and, and we'll talk more about that. And then there's the reduced time to completion and also reduced cost doing early college. It also increases the, the, the chance of early or on-time graduation significantly. There's other things as well. Students who, who take the early college path, they'll see reduced first year anxiety and adjustment issues. And so I guess with that, I'm going to introduce next, should we introduce the whole group? Do you want to? I'm going to introduce Rosa Maria first and she's going to speak about high school partnerships.
Hi, everybody. Good evening. Thank you for having us. I always get excited to talk about some of the work that I do here for the college. If you work with any admissions, people were usually very loud and we love doing this work. I certainly love doing this work and been doing this work for over 10 years in this particular role as Lane's admissions and recruitment coordinator. But I have been at the college about 16 years, doing some advising and stuff. But, but the work that I do is really special to me. I think you all should know that we have very close relationships with our high school counselors and we're, we're the envy of the rest of the state because I get calls from my colleagues in other admissions offices and always ask me, how do you do it? How do you get all these people in the room? How do you, you know, always have them, you know, their ear in terms of, you know, bringing you to their campuses and also bringing students here? So today I'm going to share with you some of those things that we do throughout the year. We do keep ourselves busy. If you find admissions people not busy, then we have some problems. But we, we, we certainly keep ourselves busy. So every year in the fall, we start with a kickoff event where we invite all of our high school counselors in Lane County to come to our campus and we feed them. It's very important that we bring these folks to campus and show appreciation for the work that they do on our behalf. I often see them as recruiters for our college. And I, I see it also important and valuable that we communicate with them and we share with them, what are the new programs that you all approve that we want them to market to prospective students? But it's also important for us to educate them on our processes, whether that's admissions processes or financial aid processes, anything that we are making changes to that they, it's important for them to know as they're working one-on-one with those students. We would love to be at every single high school at all times. We can't do that, but it is why we spend a lot of time, you know, sharing information with them on a daily basis as far as things that we're doing. So this kickoff event is a celebration, really to share important updates. And we also invite partners from our universities. So we invite the University of Oregon admissions folks, OSU admissions reps. And we've also invited folks from local organizations. So Connected Lane County is a good partner to Lane and also to these high schools because they share a lot of information that our students, our high school students take advantage of. So it's important to have them in the room at this kickoff event and share that, that information. If you hear any counselor talk about this event, this event is known as a bacon party because they love bacon. So we make sure that we get them a lot of bacon and we fed, we feed them. So, so if you hear them talk about that, that's usually kind of like a definition that they use, it's the bacon party. Leading into, into the rest of the year, we also meet with this same group, but on a smaller scale monthly. And so part of what we do, instead of bringing those same folks to campus is we meet at their high schools. So each high school kind of rotates and we meet monthly to again, connect with them about any updates that may come up, invite folks from our financial aid office and different folks to share some important information. So that's a really wonderful group, again, to keep that communication open and to share with folks about new programs or, or things that are happening. As part of my work, I also do some regular visits throughout the year. You can imagine that we have a very large school districts and we get to travel quite a bit. So I always like to ensure that I visit every single high school at least once, some more than one. And not only do I go to share information about the college in the fall, but also follow up in the winter to assist with financial aid applications, Oregon Promise, scholarship applications. And then in the spring, we really kind of hit them hard with getting students to complete our applications and any kind of additional steps that they may need to do for the college. This week, it was really busy in Building One. We had three high schools and we actually have one more, three schools will be tomorrow or two this week and then we, we're going to have another one tomorrow. But we've had some high schools that are bringing students directly to our campus to get them registered. So these are seniors who have been admitted, who have, you know, let us know that they're going to be coming to Lane. And it was quite busy in Building One this week. And tomorrow we have about 50 Willamette High School seniors coming in to come and register and see your advisor. So, so that's, that's a big, you know, that's a collaboration and that's a really speaks to really the dedication and, and the ways that we're listening to our partners to make sure that they have the tools from us to better support our students. And I would also like to wrap up with, we have other things that happen throughout the summer and part of those opportunities is we offer summer camps to middle school students, high school students. So getting them exposed to our trades programs like welding, culinary are some examples. And I believe this year we're bringing in a media arts summer camp. So again, it's another opportunity to expose students to our programs. You might also be hearing about some opportunities in Med Splash, which focuses on our health professions. Last week, we had about 400, close to 500 students for our Trades Expo. If you don't get, if you get a chance to go to that, please go, it's such a fun event. You know, students are, are certainly very happy and building all kinds of stuff. So with that, it's just, you know, just to wrap up to say, we do amazing work. I'm very proud of this work and I think you should be proud of the work that we, that we do. And, you know, also thank our administrators who support this work too and, and really provide the tools that we need to, to help us do this work. So thank you and I'll turn it over to, thanks Shelley.
Thank you, Rosa Maria. And I've been to her meetings and they're incredibly well-run, lots of great information and you all do a fabulous job. So on the academics affairs side of the house, we have a, a department called High School Connections and that's where we are delivering the dual enrollment. And we have two major programs here at Lane Community College. One is College Now, which is the college and the high school delivered by the high school instructor that we deem that person certified to do so. And then we also have something kind of new for you, but just kind of rebranded and it's called the Lane Early Access Program. And I'm not going to steal the thunder of Justin Chen, our dean of High School Connections and Workforce Development and also Brenda Williams, the faculty member who oversees that program. So I will let you all take it from here.
Hello, good evening, Justin Chen, dean of Workforce Development. I just want to say thank you, Dr. Bulger, Board Chairman Mulholland, board for having us here and giving us a couple minutes to speak. Can we go to the next slide, please? So I wanted to start off a little bit talking about our College Now program. So here's our numbers for 2324 school year. So as of last year, to close off, 110 courses, thank you, that were articulated and taught by high school teachers at 30. that were articulated and taught by high school teachers at 34 different high schools in our region. So I want to pause here and say not just this region, but we're talking Hermiston, Oregon, far eastern Oregon, where articulating and they are teaching our construction courses. We're talking Yam Hill Carlton School District, teaching our Chinook Wawa classes. So our presence is widespread. We just got done today with our articulation meeting for Culinary Arts. Two of our major players for Culinary Arts that are engaging students, Saban Schellenberg, an alternative ed school in the Portland metro area, Ashland High School. So our reach is far and wide, and that's where I'm honored to look at these 110 courses at 34 different high schools. We have 161 high school teachers that are delivering this content. And this is the part that I love the most. 3,092 students that are engaged in this program. So this is our opportunity to transform lives, to shorten that runway for our students, to get them that confidence, that academic support and that deep connection with LCC. And on the board here, 24,000 credits earned by those students. And we look at our top three courses. So we're always talking about credits with our purpose. And so you're seeing it reflected here with our top three courses, Math 111Z, Precalc 1, Math 112Z, Trigonometry, and Writing 121Z, Composition 1. So as far as our high schools goes, this is really focused on that transfer side of things. We're spending a lot of time now developing relationships to bring in Math 085, Math for the Trades, Math or not Math, Writing 115, which are required course for many of our CTE programs. So we're trying to shorten down that runway for our students. And so with this here, this is really built on community development, relationship building. And this is where I'm going to pause here and hand it off to probably one of the most popular people at the Bacon Party, Brenda Williams.
Hi, I'm Brenda. I'm the Early College Advisor. I'm also a part-time faculty with High School Connections. So I'm excited to introduce the LEAP program. It's Lane's Early Access Program. It's an expansion of the Tuition Free Course in a pilot program that we did with Mapleton High School this past year. 550 high school juniors and seniors have participated in the Tuition Free Course since 2022. 71% of those students have continued on with Lane. It's high school juniors and seniors choosing a course, and they were only allowed to do it spring or summer. With with Mapleton, we allow their juniors and seniors to take a tuition free course any term of their choosing. So what we decided to do with the success of both of those was to combine them into LEAP. That means juniors and seniors in the state of Oregon can take a tuition free course during any term of their choosing. And it has been a very popular idea. So we've rebranded it into LEAP, which I'm excited for. Instead of just saying tuition free, I get to actually call it a name. Our website just went live yesterday. We're going to start marketing it out to our partners. So yeah, I'm just excited to brand that out. And like Rosa Maria, I really love doing this. It's been really exciting just to get out in the high schools and talk with them and get the students excited. And I just really love my job. So with, I might pass it back to Justin. He's going to talk about some more opportunities.
Ag and tag out. Here is one of our high impact practices, and I love this opportunity that we have here. And so this is, I'm going to talk about the why for a second. So all these great things happen with College Now, with LEAP. And this is that opportunity to really engage students mentally and emotionally and confidence wise. But this is the part that I love the most about my department and my division here is really talking about the why. And so one of our partners that we're working with here is Lane ESD. Great partnership with them. Two years ago, we launched The Hope Factory. So this is located out there on Sixth and Garfield, out in the old St. Vincent de Paul building. Currently, right now, they're enrolling 30 high school juniors and seniors through the ESD. This is coming from 17 individual school districts from across the county. This is a program that is focused on work-based learning, that's focused on building temporary shelters for folks who have been affected by the wildfires, through the unhousing crisis, the unhoused crisis here in Lane County. And so this is a model that is taking off and running. This is an opportunity for high school juniors and seniors to spend part of their day in their high school classroom, bus over to The Hope Factory, get that hands-on instruction in construction, in the trades, doing all those things that are gearing them up for that next stage in their workforce, in their career development. Right now, so many of those courses are tied in with dual credit. So Math 85, this is where we're starting off with that, Construction Trades, Welding. And so these are all courses that are taught by high school faculty members who have been approved by LCC to teach these courses. It is such a joy to go there. I'd invite all of you to go. It's high school kids doing real work. It's high school kids who are bussing in from across the county to come here for a half day. It's a love story that I'm just happy to watch from my position here. Hand it back to Shelley.
Well, you don't have to. And then and to clarify, these students who are in, who are taking classes through Hope Factory, and there's a whole bunch of other initiatives, they're all getting credit through College Now. So College Now is supporting all of these other initiatives. So just in closing, we want to talk to you a little bit about some additional work that we have been doing. We had an education summit in January where we brought forth all of our superintendents and many of the people that you that you see here today and principals to talk about our relationship. And from that, what we learned is that we all want to do more. We want to do more with each other. The high schools want more college. And we want to strengthen our relationship with our high school partners as well. So from that, because there is this desire to do more, we looked at what can we do more? That's not a really heavy lift. What's what's smart? And so we're introducing LEAP in fall of 2025. Essentially, it's the same program that we've always had. We're just giving it a name and we're allowing students to take it at any time that that they that makes sense for their academics for that entire year. And we will keep an eye on it and we will grow it or, you know, change it, augment it, monitor it, and see how that works. We are also, we have enhanced engagement with superintendents. We are now meeting with them more regularly, and I think we're, we have a meeting with them just next week to talk about some different initiatives and just, so we do a really good job. I think Student Affairs does this fabulous job of really engaging with the counselors. And what we're trying to do is also engage with the superintendents as well, so that and the principals, and that we're all on the same page. And then I also want to just talk about some ongoing initiatives because I'm really glad that Justin talked about Hope Factory because there isn't always this clear distinction that Hope Factory is College Now. We're using that program to deliver college credits. So just in the last few weeks, there is lots of engagement with the high schools. We will be starting a behavioral health pathway with Lane ESD. We're starting a course next spring in the Human Services that is moving forward. We also have partnerships with the Center for Applied Learning and Community Impact. They are called Kelsey. They are from 4J. And they have four areas where they have the CTE pathway. One is in construction. I think you might be aware of Future Build. There's another in graphic design. I think just last board meeting, I think Tom Madison talked about everything he's doing in graphic design. We have a partnership with Kelsey. And those students take, it's a high school program where students take high school courses that are very much hands-on, but they also get college credit. And we're delivering that through College Now. There's also a pathway in education and another one in engineering. So those are all initiatives that we are doing with our high school partners utilizing the different dual enrollment opportunities that we have. Would you like to add anything else?
Yeah, I just think this really shows academic affairs, student affairs, working together. It's it's, I think, a great model. And we're creative and innovative in these partnerships in all these different areas too. And as as Justin said too, it's we're beyond Lane County. And and I do think we're a good example for the rest of the state as far as it goes. I've worked at community colleges before, and I think we do so much more with less.
And I think also just realizing, both Colm and I, we've now, like you're two years, two and a half years, we're realizing that our early college commitment, it's a team effort because we have different people doing different things, but that just means that we're doing it well because we have a different focus. And yeah.
Just if you've got questions.
Yeah.
I'll just start with a thank you for all of the amazing work that you're doing and the new or expanding partnerships and deepening of relationships that are happening right now. And appreciate my colleagues for supporting the work session poll on this topic. It's very valuable presentation and I'll have some questions, but I'll go to to you first. Who was first, Julie or Kevin?
And then Denise too. So in the College Now program, you know, with all those math classes and the writing 121, and now you're talking about 115, which I think is technical writing. So how many teachers are there that are actually delivering this in high schools?
If we go back to it, it's like 100. I don't have the exact number off the top of my head.
Oh, it was on this slide?
It's on the slide.
Okay.
160.
Do, so how is the program funded? Do any of those teachers get a stipend for doing that or any of that type of stuff?
Unfortunately, no. So this is part of the work where it's that relationship with the high schools where these are classes that are being taught in the high schools articulated with us. And this is a piece that these teachers are doing this out of their choice. Some direction from their districts here to really get those opportunities to our students.
So and how do how does LCC ensure that those teachers are delivering the curriculum in the manner in which LCC wants the curriculum to be delivered?
It's a really good question, Julie. So in this springtime, we have our articulation meetings. And so right now, our articulation meetings are where our LCC faculty are leading conversations, workshops and trainings where we're reviewing syllabi. We're looking at course outcomes. We're looking at best practices. This last year, we embedded a little bit of professional development as part of our give back to the teachers at the high school level. And so it's just a method of checks and balances that we work across with the high schools.
So do we have a program embedded in with the faculty that are delivering the training? That that there's a segment for part of whatever that duties are or anything like that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Kevin, then Denise, then Steve.
Wow, wow, wow. One of my favorite presentations since I've been on the board. So really, congratulations to you all. I really appreciate the work that you do. And I just, I get excited when I hear about working with high school students and I see that in your faces and I hear it in your voices. So I know it's genuine. Appreciate that. Also, congrats to President Bolger for encouraging and supporting these efforts and providing leadership and, you know, recognizing opportunities in the educational landscape to better engage young folks and help them think about LCC and going into the trades and, you know, other other professions. So I just thank you. Fantastic.
Yeah, Denise, and then Steve.
Thank you. Always excited to hear about these connections. I'm very familiar with programs like dual enrollment and it's exciting. A couple of questions as we, we meaning the college, considers and takes some steps towards being a Hispanic-serving institution. Are some of these orientations and flyers and conversations also offered in Spanish? Because of course, the families, you know, are often the ones that are very supportive and behind the students' efforts. So I think that's a very important outreach. That's one question. And then the other one is that this Hope Factory with the modular kind of reminded me about the bond measure that talked about a mobile unit, which of course is something very much talked about still in the Florence, Mapleton area. I did hear, you know, Mapleton mentioned, and hopefully also the Sayus Law High School students are taking opportunities as well. Anyway, so just wanted to hear about those two things.
Yeah, thank you for the question. So when I got hired for this job, this was a bilingual required position. So part of my responsibilities is to really develop those relationships also with our Latino community. As an immigrant, I take that seriously and do try to spend as much time as I can with our Latino students. And if you're not familiar, Springfield High School has a mariachi on their on their on their high school. And they host a Latino family night every single year. I am there. I present. And I I attend many high schools that do specific presentations for supporting Latino students. So this year, many schools invited myself and our financial aid department to do specific financial aid presentations for this specific population and and be able to articulate and answer questions around, you know, what is it going to mean for a parent who doesn't have an SSN? You know, is it is it okay for my student to fill out a FAFSA? So we're having those really sensitive conversations and we're bringing people that reflect this community, including myself and other folks from from campus. So so we do like, you know, a lot of that outreach. And, you know, as far as HSI, I know that I was tapped to be on on a work group and and work on that. I also get to sit on the work group for direct admissions and we're having those conversations about how do we serve our Latino students in Oregon? So so there's a lot of conversation. I don't know if Shelley or Colm want to add more.
Thank you.
I can talk a little bit about how we are serving our rural districts. Many, sometimes with our rural schools, College Now can be challenging. And that is because of the certification process of the faculty, of the high school instructors who are teaching. And it's something that we're looking at, of course, and and seeing how we might be able to remove any any obstacles that that we might be able to do. So we're we're looking at that process. The, one of the reasons why we wanted to brand the LEAP program was for those districts because the direct dual enrollment courses tends to serve those students better because those schools might not have high school instructors who can be certified because of their credentials. They may not have the content area. Now, let's say they don't have the content area, but they can be alternatively certified. It takes, it's a process. So what happens is students can lose out on opportunities. So that is one of the reasons why we developed LEAP and made it part of a sustainable offering at our high school, I mean, at our college. Did you want to add? Oh, the, oh, with the the mobile app.
The mobile unit.
Mobile lab as part of the bond measure. We are still looking at that and we are examining what we might be able to do. And I don't know, Karen, do you want to talk about that in greater detail?
Denise, we're still in the planning phases with Academic Affairs. It's still on the list. It's still moving forward in a fashion. We're just trying to figure out what that would look like.
I have Steve.
Thank you. Two questions. First, a comment echoing some of the other board members' appreciation. It's it is just so nice to hear a presentation that is so full of sort of genuine enthusiasm by those who lead the program. So thank you. So two questions. It was, is it Rosa? Did I get that right? I think so. First question, I think is for you. You were talking about, you know, going out to all these high schools, bringing these students in to register over in Building One. I want to ask a few questions about that. I is, does Building One function as like a one-stop shop for new students? And so for for me anyways, I mean, you know, can they go into that building and only that building to register for classes and get find out to find out about financial aid, other wraparound services that we might have, SNAP, it's that this and that? Or do they have to, you know, do they have to go searching all around campus?
Yes, it does. And I will say a lot of that is credit to Colm, Don and the president who have invested support of that building. But it is intended for a students, students to come in and get everything they need to get done. So you might have heard of our Retch Fest events that we do occasionally. We just did one on Saturday. We had 81 students show up. Every single one of those students left with the schedule. Every single one of those students left with the schedule. So you know, it's it's very much intended for us to really provide that wraparound services and have the key people there with the access and technology and getting the students what they want. So I invite you to visit building one and come and see all the action that happens. If you want a list of events, I'm happy to share that with you. Especially during during a breakfast, if anything, just maybe giving water to folks, right? But it's it's very exciting to be in that building. There's just so much that's happening. And and like I said, we have amazing leadership that continues to provide the leadership and just dedication to help supporting us doing that kind of groundwork.
Okay, well, thank you. I just want to.
If I could just add one thing, there are a couple of areas, of course, students with accommodations in building nineteen. We have career pathways in building four. So SNAP benefits, things like that. But as a rule, what we really tried to do, we've changed the model in building one too. So we always have someone on the front desk when someone walks in the door. So they're not wondering where to go anymore. And so what we ideally try to do is a warm handoff and walk a student over to where they need to go. And and so they don't just get halfway there, get lost and get disillusioned. So that's what they do.
Thank you for that. I we have heard over the years, at least the four or five years I've been here, that people occasionally complain and it's not necessarily always, you know, legitimate, you know, some. But nonetheless, we have heard some complaints that I don't know where to go and I, you know, I've missed out on all these various services and that kind of thing. So the effort to that you're making, that you're talking about to consolidate all of those things in one place so that you can, people can say on campus, you don't know where to go, go to building one. You know, and most of everything and maybe everything over time will be consolidated into that location. Certainly a vision I would hope that we would, you know, be moving towards. So thank you for that. The other question is back to to leap. So there was you shared some numbers that were, I want to make sure I understood them right. There you said something like two and two million plus or something like that in revenue and two hundred thousand or something like that in expense. So that's like a ten X, you know, difference. That caught my attention. First, I want to make sure I understood that right. And if I did, then I have some follow up questions.
Go back to, could we go back to that slide and we'll do our best to explain that?
Yeah.
All right. So so what this says, the cost to the college in the free in the tuition waiver is approximately three hundred thousand dollars for those those two academic years. What we find is that students who enroll in those courses tend to enroll here. So it's bringing, we don't know if it's a causal relationship, but it's definitely a correlation that after the students enroll in that tuition free course, they tend to enroll here as a matriculated student, and that is what that is showing.
That makes more sense. So it's an investment upfront. The art, this is more like an R O I kind of rough estimate. I misunderstood originally.
And it is rough at this point.
Yeah, but no, that makes a lot much more sense. I did. I misunderstood it before. Thank you for that.
And just to keep bear in mind, the program that we have now, it's known, it's mostly known. It's known because of the the great work that Rosa is doing and letting everybody know about it and Brenda is as well. But now it's branded and it's on our website. So this is an opportunity that more people will know about.
And I want to add something. The LEAP students will have a one stop shop. I'm their one stop shop. I do their admissions. I help them advise. I help them register. I make sure they're paying their bill. And then I touch base with them throughout the term as well.
I think it's to me now. So again, thanks so much for all of this amazing work. Really excited to have this topic come up. It's been a priority for mine for the the whole year. As as someone that did dual enrollment and basically got my associate's degree, same time I got my high school graduation, it's it's I just really value the idea that we're going to build those pathways for for more more people. So I think I'll I'll separate my questions, some on college now and some on the free classes. Can we go to the college now and the number of students that have taken those courses? So it looks like three thousand. This is an annual, these are annual numbers.
This is for twenty three, twenty four.
Okay, so three thousand students, twenty four thousand credits. That's about eight thousand credits or eight credits per student. So about two classes each, it looks like. Do we know approximately how many seniors there are in Lane County each year?
I don't have that number off the top of my head, Zach. I'm happy to pull that up.
Okay. I think this is one of the areas where we haven't fully bounced back from pre COVID numbers. And I'm very interested in seeing how we can try and sort of restore some of those more historic college now rates. Any thoughts on what we can do to further support our high schools in offering college now courses, including potentially offering stipends for the professors? Since we do, we get reimbursed by the state some for these courses that the call, the high schools are paying for, but we get some of the state funding for.
So a couple of things that are happening here with our partnership with Lane E S D. So teacher, high school teachers who are coming in to get certified go through a process called lane, many of them go through lane regional promise. So this has been very popular with many of our rural school districts, Sayuslaw, Mapleton, different places that way where they don't meet right now qualifications to teach. I'm going to pick on writing one twenty one for a moment. Where they come through a cohort model. It's an entire year. So there is that level of mentorship that is driven by our faculty members. And so those high school teachers receive a stipend professional development through the district. On our end at L C C, we are offering stipends for our high our college faculty who are leading those key, I'm I'm trying not to use too much education jargon here, professional learning communities that mentorship throughout the year.
I want to add to that. One of the reasons we had the education summit and we have these regular meetings with a regular cadence of meetings with the superintendents and Lane E S D is so that we can meet together, have some alignment between what they're interested in with respect to their students in their schools and what we have to offer. And those conversations are happening now. Shelley mentioned, Dr. Tinkin mentioned some of that work. And was there something else that you wanted to perhaps add to that?
Just we are, we're meeting with our superintendents to have those very discussions. And we've met a couple of times and we'll continue to do so, but to really just examine those processes through college now and how we're certifying faculty. So.
One of the things I've been thinking, you know, we talk a lot about the the demographic cliff, the high school enrollment cliff, that's it. The enrollment cliff. And I really would love to, I always invite the superintendents to encourage more high school graduates to come to us because I think that we can increase our yield. But when you start to see some of the data, for example, Mapleton's high school, Maple, Mapleton School District, there were four graduates and five graduates rather, and we actually had four of those graduates come to Lane. So this is a really, really important program for those rural schools.
Board member Full Nagy couldn't be here tonight, but I'll I'll try to channel some idea he shared in the past, which is the idea of a consortium of some of the small high schools where maybe they could partner together to offer college now courses. Is that something that you've considered or is on your radar?
It's it's an interesting model. It's definitely something I would bring up to our superintendents.
Thank you. Okay. And a couple of questions about the the LEAP course. Can we go to the numbers for the LEAP course? So five hundred and fifty students since twenty twenty two. I feel like we could probably advertise this a bit more and and really promote this program with our our high school partners to try and make it so, you know, ideally, all high school students are taking advantage of a free course. So I think that would just be my 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 first question is just, you know, thoughts on how you know, is there a potentially that we should set a goal for the number of of high schoolers that we would enroll each year?
We are working through, looking at our metrics right now and developing some benchmarks.
Okay.
Because there's a cost to the institution, we have to factor in that that cost. And you'll see that the cost, it's an investment to be sure. And there's an R O I. I think that that was mentioned earlier, but there's definitely a cost to the institution. So we we weigh that.
And then also I should mention, this is the first time that we have mentioned this program publicly. So you're hearing about it for the first time. So you know, it's it's a program we've always had. So it's just re rebranding something we've had and just making it more sustainable. But we wanted to share that with you tonight and I'm going to be sharing this information with some of the high school partners tomorrow.
Great. That's that's fabulous. I think I have one more question and then I'll go to go to you, Steve. So, you know, President Bolger and I, we were able to visit one of the high schools where they're doing some of the C T E work, building not tiny homes, but more sheds, sort of a sister program to the Hope Factory. And many of those high schoolers, they mentioned us, some of them were graduating just three, three classes short of an associate's degree. They were graduating high school, you know, just three classes short of a college degree. And, you know, I would think it would be pretty amazing if we could eventually make it so that rather than taking one free course, we could potentially provide that bridge for the full three classes to get them to that associate's degree. Is that something that you thought about previously and and any thoughts on that idea?
I think we agree and so do our superintendents. It's something that we want to discuss is how can we do this more intentionally? So yes, I think we're interested in it.
Okay. Well, just thank you so much again for the amazing work, just a really, really important areas to focus to be partners, you know, get the same, you know, get back to our historic rates of participation and really blow up this really amazing program and let everybody know that we offer this free class. And hopefully in the future, one or two more. More discussion or questions?
Yeah, just some of the discussion got me thinking a little bit. To what extent are these five hundred and fifty students, you know, taking a seat in a class that would otherwise have gone unfilled? Or and then to what extent are, you know, they forcing us in a sense to open up a new section or what that kind of a thing?
It's a very good question, but it's a good question. But but however, we are going to, where the course is tuition free, it is not fee free. Students are still responsible for their fees. We do get state reimbursement for these courses, F T E, up to that that growth cap that we discussed. But there is that possibility. But you're absolutely, I think you're just begging the question, how do we control for cost? And it's going to have to be something that we monitor. Also, bear in mind as well that Lane E S D and the high schools are also coming with funding for dual enrollment as well. So the idea that I would like to explore is that we're kind of all doing our part. We've got college now, we have LEAP and also Lane E S D is coming. They have funds as well. For example, this behavioral health pathway that we're developing, they have the funding for that course. So if we do this correctly, and again, this is, this is a, you know, we're starting small with LEAP and intentionally and advise the student correctly, there is that possibility of a credential by the time the student graduates from high school.
The, you know, we were told, Kevin brings this up a lot, that capacity factor or something like that, that we were told about a couple of years ago, right? Where on average or something like that, our courses are seventy five, eighty percent, I kind of forget the number, you know, filled. And there's that much capacity. This is, you know, highly kind of variable. I get that across across different classes. But nonetheless, we have all this spare capacity that in a sense is, you know, the classes in a sense is paid for, you know, at some point you 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 hit your break even point for a class. I don't know, that's going to vary too, you know, how many seats have to be filled before the class is paid for in a sense. And then, you know, there's some amount of, you can think of it as free seats. And so just another way to think about ways to expand the program without necessarily taking on additional expense.
And some institutions do that. They open it up as soon as they know the the course will run. I think what's a little different with what we're doing is we're not, the student doesn't have to wait. They can go ahead and just.
Yeah, so they're not the last in line. That's nice too.
And if I can add also, prior to the start of each term for a number of weeks leading up to the term, we have a group from academic affairs and we have student affairs and institutional research. And we we look at all of the class fill rates, we look at wait lists, we look at all of those things to try and make like really good decisions as we move forward. Do we need to add another section and so on? So we're really working on that, I think, well together.
Got Denise in mind?
No, just keep in mind, at least from my experience, that a lot of times these classes are online and online capacity is different, sometimes regulated by contractual agreements. But online capacity is different than seats in the room, so to say. And a lot of these programs, courses, dual enrollment and things like LEAP are online.
Julie?
This is all fabulous and it's got my future thinking brain kind of noodling like crazy because, you know, four J just came out with a staggering drop in enrollment numbers and forecasting for it. That's pretty alarming, which then trickles up to us, right? That that's going to, I guess that's what you're referring to as the cliff. I'm not familiar with all the jargon yet. But, you know, if we increase enrollment of participation, if our economy no recession, but you know, as we might get there, then it seems like this program offers an opportunity and a pathway for all the students that are there, you know, that as the economy gets this, these are the types of programs that I think are going to be utilized the most. And so I'm really excited that we're actually getting them in place now so that we can start to figure it out, working with the principals and the superintendents and really trying to get all of that in place. So thank you. Congratulations. I'm very excited to see how this is all going to go.
Great. Thank you. I would also just like to add, I think our students are questioning, our community is questioning the relevancy of higher education. And these sorts of programs allow us to be innovative on how we deliver that instruction. So can we do things differently in the future? You know, where does high school end? Where does college begin? And we're at a point where we we need to start thinking about that and being creative with our resources. So I'm super excited about this and I really appreciate President Bolger's commitment to supporting early college. And we appreciate the board's support as well. And it's just the beginning and we'll continue to develop this and be great partners with our K through twelve schools. So thank you.
Look forward to learning more and getting updates in the future. Thank you so much. And I'm glad you all liked it. Okay. Moving on to closing items, are there any board member questions or comments? Seeing none. Question on future meeting dates. So we no longer have a budget meeting next Wednesday because we approved the budget tonight, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so please note that there is no longer a budget committee meeting next Wednesday, May twenty eighth, and our next regular meeting is Wednesday, June fourth. Please note that there is an executive session after a short break. With that, our meeting is adjourned.